Okay, hello everyone, welcome to January's Community Conversations. For those who have never joined one of our community conversations, I'll give a little bit of a background here. But this used to be something we did live where people could sign up. We would meet at various locations in the community. I would sit down with a group of folks and discuss a smattering of issues, whether it was curriculum, school safety, discipline, current events, teaching and learning, athletics, whatever the topic was, we would have conversations for roughly an hour in the community. And it was a wonderful time, a great way to communicate and engage with folks. However, we weren't necessarily getting the audience that we wanted to. We circulated around to different buildings, but it would be, I'm gonna say, a large crowd would be a dozen people. And in our community of 100,000 people, that just was, didn't seem to be enough engagement for our community conversations. So we decided to take a different approach this year and do it live on Facebook Live. We've had thousands of views on these, these videos or conversations. They're not all live while we're doing it, but people watch it after the fact. So if nothing else, it allows these community conversations to be more accessible to our folks who are following us on Facebook. And we also embed it in communications out to the community like eMatters, a newsletter we send to staff and things of that nature. It's also published on our YouTube channel. So with that, we've had a couple versions of these community conversations. And this month, it being January, we decided to focus on School Board Appreciation Month. So School Board Director Appreciation Month, excuse me. So we have some current and former school board directors to talk about what it means to serve your community. Let me be abundantly clear right from the top and please throughout this conversation, feel free to engage in the chat here on Facebook. The objective here is not to discuss politics or political issues. Rather, it's about the role of being a board director. What are some things that you didn't expect or did expect? What are the biggest challenges? What are the commitments? Those types of things. So that's the objective of today's conversation. And I will start by bringing people in and doing a brief introduction. The one who is a very familiar face to this format and to me engaging with all of you in this way is my friend and yours, Mr. Bob Gilmer. Bob? Now, there he is.
How you doing?
Normally, normally he does this way.
I got dances and whatnot. I'm excited to be in this one today. I can't wait for our conversation with our guests. If we're ready to jump in and introduce our guests.
Yeah, so let me, I'll explain that Bob has never been a board director. He's always been an employee or a student in North Penn. However, Bob has been working in the North Penn School District for 35 years. And in the Communications Department, for how long, Bob?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two years. He has sat through thousands of school board meetings and facilitated on the back end and made the magic happen. So I thought Bob could really add to the conversation about his experiences. He's seen the best and the not best, we'll say. And, and some of the challenges that the community has experienced over the years. So with that, let's go to, where do you want to go? Present or past, Bob?
Let's start with our current president.
All right, our current board president, new as in the beginning, as of the beginning of December, Ms. Kathy McMurtry. Welcome to the panel.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bauer. Glad to be here.
Yeah, good afternoon, Kathy. Thanks so much for joining us. Next, we'll jump to Mrs., former board president, but current board director, Mrs. Tina Stoll. Hey Tina.
Hello.
And lastly, a blast from the past, a former board director, Mr. Ed D'Azio. Hey, Ed.
Hello, thank you for having me here.
Yeah, thanks for being here. So first, I think it's important, you know, sometimes I equate it to, if I'm out in the community, like the other day, where did I go? Oh, I stopped at Wawa to pick up food before my son's basketball practice. And I had sweatpants and a sweatshirt on and a hat. And I got like 10 looks. Like I think people think I only wear a suit, right? That like, that's my persona in the community. And I'm sure for many people, it's the same with all of you. Like they just see you at school board meetings and serving in that capacity. But I think it's important to humanize folks and just like, who are you? So in, I like to say to some administrators in the district, in a page, not a chapter, who are you? So Ed, why don't we start with you? Cause you may be unfamiliar to some of our newer community members, but Mr. D'Azio, who's Ed D'Azio and when did you serve on the school?
Sure, thank you. So my, my dates of service on the school board were from 2015 until 2019. I grew up in Montgomery Township. I went to Montgomery Elementary School. I went to Penbrook Middle School. And then came back and, and again, was serving on the board from 2015 to 2019.
I do believe at some point in there, you were board vice president as well, correct?
Yes, I think in 2018.
Okay, great. All right, thank you for that. Anything you want to share outside of like, what do you do for a living? What are your hobbies, interests, those types of things?
Yeah, sure. So professionally, I'm an attorney. I work at Whistler Perlstein. I practice primarily education law, represent school districts K to 12. That's, that's what I do professionally. As some of you may know, my, my law firm actually serves as the solicitor currently for the school district. My, my colleague and law partner, Kyle Summers, is the, is the main point of contact there. And really, I, I, and I'm sure we'll talk about this in a few moments, but what really drove me to serve on the school board was, you know, commitment to education and commitment to service. And I hope I'll have an opportunity to talk about how both personally and professionally, education is sort of a passion for mine.
Got it. Love it. Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. All right, let's go to Kathy. Kathy, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself? Obviously you serve now. But when did your term start and maybe a little bit about yourself?
Sure. So my term started at the end of December 2019. And it was an interesting start. It's a fun story. I had two stepsons that graduated from the, from the school district. Then my, we went on to host exchange students. So when my stepsons moved out, it's too quiet in the house. So we hosted students and I was helping at one of the craft show fundraisers for the IFC, the International Friendship Committee, and I met Mrs. Stoll. We were selling cookies. And so she was talking with me about the high school project that they were planning to embark on at the time. And I was in the engineering field and out in the field and understood some of the aspects. And I thought, wow, you know, I thought about someday I'd like to become part of this a bit more, you know, collaboratively. So I ran and was elected, but then we were, you know, COVID presented in March of 2020. So I ran again in 24, three, 23, and was elected again for a second term. So I'm excited to be back on the board. And at this point, you know, things outside that I like to do are many. I'm a fan of the beach. I enjoy walking the beach. I enjoy riding my bike. I'm in a book club. Been in the same book club for 28 years. Yes, I'm that old. And we have read, well, we used to meet monthly. And now we probably meet four or five times a year realistically. But I will say it's one of the best things that I ever did in terms of community friendship and also reading, because we read all different types of books.
I love it. We did, Bob, we gotta throw that question out there. Can you? There it is.
On now, gotta know from the panel.
From Stephanie Hughes-Moyl. I'll just ask thumbs up or thumbs down. Are we, oh, Ed, Ed, I remember this about you. You are not an Eagles fan.
Look out.
I'm rooting for the, I'm rooting for the Eagles this time around.
All right. We won't tell you who he's a fan of. All right, let's jump over to Mrs. Stoll. Thank you Kathy. And Tina, same thing, just how long have you been serving and kind of a little bit of background, some of your interests?
Sure. So I am a North Penn alum as well. I graduated in 1983, which somebody was kind enough to point out at the graduation last year, that that was 40 some years ago. I never did the math, but yeah, it's been a long time. My, I have three sons that went through the district. And while they were going to school, I was president of the public teacher club. And that kind of got me involved in the school community. It got me going to school board meetings. And the committee meetings were really the action was happening. So I used to go to all the meeting meetings as well. And then I got interested in all the other aspects really of public education. I ran for school board three times and lost. And I ran one more time, thanks to somebody on this panel, kind of talked me into giving it another shot. He's smiling. So, and then, so I, we won in 2017 and I've been serving ever since.
So you have someone on this panel, we'll call him.
I don't want to count them or anything.
You have someone on the panel to blame.
I do.
Yeah, understood. All right. Thank you for that. And lastly, while you're not serving, Bob, just a little, you know, a little bit about who you are too. You're, you're often the guy behind the camera and people see your face, but just, I think it's important. So who's Bob?
Yeah, in 1989, North Penn High School grad, grew up in North Wales. Started here in 1993 to start North Penn Television. And really, this is one of the interesting stories with North Penn Television. We really got started as a television station and what we do today because of school board meetings. And our local taxpayers association had been recording our board meetings coming with their camcorder. And we're talking about revamping the curriculum and all of this in the 90s. Like, you know, we should cover board meetings. This is something we should do. And, you know, I was hired here to create the station, but our primary mission was we are here to cover board meetings. And the very first thing we did was October, I think it was the 12th in 1993, and I've been covering school board meetings ever since. So I haven't, I don't have thousands, but it's well over 700, probably 750 school board meetings I've done in my time here. So I've been to a few. But ever since then, you know, been here in the community, in the North Penn community, my kids both graduated from here. So here we are. Seems like yesterday, I really do believe, I feel, I don't believe. It's a long time ago, but it feels like we just kind of got started with all this stuff. So I've had the pleasure to work with everybody since 93 on, on the school board.
Got it. I'm gonna do some quick math. Seven a month times 12 months.
See, I didn't even, I didn't even, I was just counting regular work session action.
Yeah, so you're just counting work session and action. If you count all the committee meetings and you're at nearly all of them.
We might've done 700 meetings the last three years. That's possible.
I think that's very possible. All right. So I thank all of you for that. And so the focus here, and we do have a question in here, and I'm gonna get to them. Please, folks, throw your questions in the chat. Again, our focus here, you can ask some of your silly Eagles questions. I love those. Keep it coming, Steve Jones. But the focus here today is about serving your community, community service and Board Director Appreciation Month. So we have board members past and present who are here, just kind of talk about the role itself. So I'll, I'll leave it up to whoever wants to go first. And I apologize, there are some dogs barking in the background. This is what we get when we do these things from home. But my question is really, what is something about the role of board director that has really like shocked you or surprised you or something like, I had no idea that it would include a blank? Anybody, it's up for, if you want to raise your hand here or just kind of signal if you want to take it first and then we'll, we'll stir it up.
I'll, I'll start us off there. I think for me during my time on the school board, one of the things that you quickly realize when you're, when you're in the role is that the decisions are not easy, right? And so when you're on the other side of the table and you're out there in the community, you have a perspective on a certain issue. Maybe you have, maybe you feel a certain way about what, something that's going on in the schools or how the schools should spend money or how they should hire. And you have an opinion based on the experience that you have, right? And the experiences that you're having with the school district. When you're on the other side and you actually have to make decisions, decisions become infinitely more complex and more challenging because there's so much more to any issue than sometimes what's out there in the public domain. And that's because there are so many good ideas and there are so many things that you want to be able to do and wish you could do. But resources are finite and there are so many other limitations on what you can do. So I think one of the things that was kind of eye opening for me was that issues that were seemingly straightforward issues or quote, easy issues were much more challenging to navigate as a board director.
Yeah, that's beautifully said. And while I've never been a board director, I've been a assistant principal, high school principal, assistant soup and soup. And I would say, if I was answering that question, Ed, I would say something very similar. Like every story you hear now in the news, in the paper, I'm always hesitant, like, I don't know all the information. And I always kind of take a shock or a step back, excuse me. So yeah, it's, there's just a lot more and the decisions are hard and the prioritization is always so challenging. So great answer. Tina or Kathy, anything to add or a different perspective?
Oh, go ahead. Tina, please go.
So now I disagree with what Ed said, and I would also add, it wasn't a shock really, but it's, it does take getting some use to it. Like you're just one of nine, right? So you have no more power than anybody else and it's hard to get sometimes nine people to come to consensus. And even though you might have similar viewpoints or, you know, or not, it's just really hard to get consensus sometimes on issues and then to have to do it. You can't buy like sunshine also, right? You can't like all like, you have to have these conversations at the committee meeting level or personal conversations one-on-one. But I just think that has been, sometimes the more difficult part is getting consensus amongst nine people.
Thank you Tina and Kathy.
So mine might be not as in-depth, but I, early on, we did not get to interact with students because of COVID. And then when we finally did, I didn't realize just how smart, how, how innovative students are today. I've learned a lot from them in terms of technology. I didn't, I don't know, I didn't have any expectation, but honestly, I am incredibly gobsmacked by how, how quick they are to learn all the information that's available to them and how they just are much more articulate and really strong in the use of it. I'm just gobsmacked by it, honestly.
Yeah, that's a great answer as well. Bob, I'm gonna put you on the spot here. Sure. I'm sorry if you get it wrong. I apologize. But kind of in accordance with what Kathy shared there, whenever we find ourselves in a situation, we're discussing and like, what should we do? We're not so sure. How about this? How about? I have a line that I always say to you and you always point to it. And what is it?
Trust the kids. I mean, I wrote that down here again, is that where when things get really complex and I know for myself, I might have an opinion about what we're doing and why. And I'm like, I don't know if it's worth X. I think about what kind of, you know, headline it might generate or whatever. And I always do come back to, to what you've, you, you preach Todd, is that, you know, listen to the kids, trust the kids. They are really insightful. They're brilliant and, and you, they pay attention to what's going on way more than you think. So trust the kids.
Trust the kids. Great. Yeah. So it's, they won't let you down, right? The kids won't let you down. And we, we have a tendency as adults to be like, ah, they're, they're, they're just kids. They're not. Like you said, Kathy, they're brilliant. They're innovative. And sometimes we get in our own way.
Yeah, I think the best example of that in my time, kind of here, has been the graduation ceremonies for 2020. You know, we were going back and forth and back and forth about what we should do. And then I think it was Dr. G that suggested we should have form and listen to the kids. And then it worked out really well. And I remember somebody commenting at the 2020 graduation, like, this is great. Can we do this again next year? No.
Yeah, seven days worth of graduations. Forty-three of them to be exact.
It was, it was fun, but no.
Yeah. We do need to recognize, like, there are times where the adults, it's like a cliche at this point, like the adults in the room need to make a decision. There are times where people don't like that, right? Like someone's in charge and someone has to make a decision. But when the opportunity presents itself and when appropriate, like get that feedback, you know, listen. And that's what it's about in the end is the kids. So love it. Okay. I want to transition to talk about, so we said like things that were unexpected or surprised you. What about the commitment itself? Like I think running for school board sounds like a great idea. Like sure, yeah, I'll serve my community. I'll be a community leader. This will be great. And then reality can, can get you. And the commitment itself is massive. And my community service right now at this stage in my life, I have a 12-year-old son and a 14-year-old daughter. It's like my kid's sports, right? But my commitment is not the same commitment that you all have. And at least I'm spending time with my family. You are not when you're doing this and serving in this way. So I don't know if anybody wants to take it first, but what is the commitment? And how much time would you say you put in in the average week, month, year kind of thing?
I would say, what is it? What two, there's action and work session. So it's two meetings a month minimum. And then we're each on, I think, average three committees. So that's five meetings a month per person. And yeah, it's probably, depending on the time of month, 10 to 20 hours. Like when you're reading all the documents that come along with everything and doing, you know, your homework and all that. So. And I think Kathy and I have the benefit, like our kids are grown, so it's a little easier for us to be committed to time than it is from some of them, our fellow board directors that have kids. But I do think on our team in particular, it has been nice because everybody has their kind of their area of expertise. And we trust each other as team members that, you know, that person's gonna take care of that part. And nobody has to be involved in every single part of the board. So everybody doing their part to be a team fighter and carry, be a good work. So I think that's really helpful.
Got it. Thank you. I did get a shout out there from Chabuka. Chabuka engages with us often. Chabuka was a student at the high school when I was high school principal. Hope you're doing well, Chabuka. Some other comments and questions in the chat that we'll, I'll hopefully get to. Couple more questions. Anybody want to add anything to what Tina shared? Ed, I guess we could fly back to when you first started in 2015, we probably weren't doing virtual meetings at all. We weren't recording all meetings, right, Bob?
Correct.
Or broadcasting all meetings, but what was it like back in the day, a whole 10 years ago? How many committees and what do you think was, hey Shannon, thank you for that. Shannon giving me a shout out. So what was the commitment back when you were new to the board?
I seem to recall, you know, having a couple of meetings every month in terms of full board meetings and then each board director serving on a few committees. It, it really was probably at least one meeting per week on average. And again, they were, they were in-person meetings and, and sometimes those meetings were short, sometimes they were longer. There's also prep time that goes into those meetings. And that's just the, that's just serving in the role of preparing for the meetings, right? When you're out there in the community and people are reaching out to you and they're calling you and they run into you in the store, there's, there's other time that you spend in the role beyond the time that you're actually sitting in the meeting room.
Yeah, really, really great point. I, I say that the two busiest days of my month are the action meeting day and the day after. Because there's always, you know, follow-up preparation conversations about what's coming up tonight and make sure everybody understands. And do you have any questions for me? And trying to get everybody ready for all of the items. Because we do have the committee structure, like Tina mentioned at the beginning, we have the work of the committees, but not everybody's on every committee and they can't be. That's the whole point. So just following up and making sure everyone's in the know on all matters that will be voted upon. And then there are questions following that as well. All right. Anybody have anything else to add? Otherwise I'll transition to a new question.
I, I would just like to add to both of the other school board colleagues, Dr. Bauer, that, you know, all those things are true. And I also think depending upon the subject, you can spend a lot of time really researching it, asking questions, not just clarification questions, just understanding because you want to do a good job. You want to present well, you want to be informed so that if you do engage with someone from the community, whether it's an adult or a student, you, you want to be able to speak to it, to whatever you need to do. So personally, you know, I, I tend to need to read more and understand more. So yeah, I think there is a definite impact on your life outside of the meeting environment. And yeah, you have to be prepared or not. I would say you may not be prepared for it, but you've got to do it. And if you want to, if you want to be successful in the role.
Yeah, I, I think that's absolutely correct. Kathy, you've been board president now for a month and a half and I think.
I think it's about 26 days, but I don't know.
But who's counting? Well, reorg was the beginning of December, right? So it's.
Wow, is it that long? Okay.
Yeah.
We had the holiday, we had the holidays, so.
But an example is yesterday morning, you and I are talking on a Sunday morning, right? Like it's, it's not as simple as people think. You show up at a meeting. There's conversations on the weekends and nights and mornings and, you know, it's such a huge commitment. Okay. Bob, because you are not a current or former elected official and because you've been a part of thousands of meetings.
Sure.
There is a comment here from Aaron saying, you know, I'm really surprised at how the role itself and education in general has become, seems to be more politicized. But you have said to me at times, and you sent me clips, I think when you think I'm getting down.
Yeah.
And when you think like, Todd, look, he's beat up right now. You said, you'll send me clips from the 80s or the 90s and say, it's always been like this. Hang in there kind of thing. But what is your kind of take on that comment and your thoughts? And again, I'm not looking to get into a debate.
No, no, no.
The challenge of the role.
Yeah, and I think it can transition into talking about how we, how we work with the public, how a school board member works with the public too. But, you know, I started here in 93 and I told you, we started for the purposes of covering school board meetings, right? And if you remember in the mid 90s there, that's where we were talking second high school. So that was a big debate in the community. And at the base level of everything with a school board meeting, it is, I think, the most accessible form of government. You know more about what's going on in schools if you have kids. So you have a, you, you know sort of what's going on in school board government, right? And it's very accessible. You come to a meeting, you, you can talk and people are gonna listen and you're gonna have lots of conversations. But when we started in 93, we had the school board second, or the second high school debate. There was a lot of controversy then. Now, we didn't have social media at all. We didn't have a website that didn't exist yet, all those types of things. So the speed of which you could respond and come back and, and talk about things was slowed down. I would say that was the difference there 30 years ago, is the speed of which communication takes place today. And you had to wait, we always had in the paper and the, the old timers would know the sound off back in the day and the reporter. You'd wait three days for somebody to sound off in the paper and then you respond to it three days later again. So everything was very fast. But I remember at the time with the controversy and more people coming out the board meetings, like, did North Penn Television's coverage of school board meetings create more controversy, meaning more people saw it or were people more engaged? And I have to tell you, I also believe this because what I've been doing my entire life, right? That it, people were far more informed about what was going on as opposed to reading a headline in the newspaper or just seeing sound off. There was that time where I'm like, well, they know what's going on because they're watching the actual meeting, hearing the actual school board directors talk about an issue. And it wasn't, I heard this, right? But it kind of feels like we flipped a little bit there because now we get a headline or a tweet so fast. And I'm even guilty of starting to read a headline and go, what? Oh, wait, let me finish reading the rest of it to understand what's going on. So I think this community has always been really engaged, which I think is a good transition to, how do we engage and, and talk to our residents and find out what they, how they feel about certain policies and whatnot? At the same time, how do we work together as a community to do what's best for kids? My last little thing, working with lots of school board members over the years is that I will tell you this, everybody that I've ever worked with, they all want to do what's right by kids, every single one of you. Throughout all the years, you want to do what's right by kids. And trying to figure that out is like you said at the beginning, incredibly complex and difficult. And that's the one thing I know that I, I've always had great relationships with everyone just because we're all, we're all working for the same thing. So I'm just curious, especially in this speedy environment of social media, et cetera. How do you guys deal with taking all that input and trying to respond back to our residents?
Bob, I thought I was the host.
Sorry, too late, I took over.
Just kidding. But really a great question. Like, how do you manage all of that? And responding to the constituents and to the community and, you know, there are competing forces. There's no doubt about it. So what do you find helpful in managing that and rooting, grounding yourself? I actually have my next question. I actually have my next question listed here. I'm kind of just taking notes as I get ideas. What grounds you? So what grounds you in the work and how do you manage those competing interests?
So I, I can, um, take this one as far as, um, dealing with constituents and communication. I give you guys a lot of the credit because all these types of forums and videos and, you know, the fact that Bob and his team are videoing every one of our meetings and posting them online. That might be the one good thing that came from COVID is that we kept that going and, um, have these videos posted and people can interact and, um, see them live or watch them later. And I think, um, the, the newsletters and the emails and the text messages and everything that goes out to you, Todd, is so helpful to help us, um, communicate with constituents. So, um, you know, all that, you guys really, you know, I guess had, had people off at the task a lot of times for us. And then, you know, they might have clarifying questions for us or ask us about like what's our opinion on something or where it starts to stand from something. But, um, you guys do such a great job communicating as a team that, um, it makes it much easier for us and we have to communicate with our constituents. So we thank you for that.
That's a great answer, Tina.
I love this team. You guys are great.
Yeah, thank you. No, I think, uh, that's absolutely a shout out for the communications department under leadership of Ms. LeBaroski and Mr. Gilmer. They really, really do a great job of getting kind of the information out there. And, um, one of my mentors, uh, told me, if you don't tell your story, someone else will, right? So it's about telling your story as often and as accurately as possible. And sometimes the facts change and telling it accurately is not always easy in the timeliness in which people would like it. But it's about telling that story.
Cause I also remind people that, um, school board directors are volunteer, right? A lot of us have other jobs that, you know, we have to focus on. So it's not like we have as much, um, time as we might like to answer everybody's questions or whatever. So this is a great help. We need to do this stuff.
Yeah, that's, I've said publicly in these meetings. So I ran home, we had a meeting at 2:30 and I ran home at three o'clock to get home for this because we have a 3:30 meeting, then we have a five o'clock meeting, then a 5:45, then a seven. Like I believe I'm going to be online tonight till nine, but you know what? My wife and children, I hear them in the other room and at least in between meetings, I can run out and give them a hug and a kiss and say, how was your day? And, you know, like that component has allowed us to maybe endure a little longer. Ed or Kathy, anything to add on top of what Tina shared?
I, I will, I will echo what Tina said because I was thinking along the same lines. You know, I think it's really wonderful that we have the virtual meetings. In addition, there have been to learn more. And again, people may say, oh, this is from the administration's lens or the staff's lens. But when we ask for informational presentations to learn more and then we're able to go out to the community or they come to us. I think that's been really, really helpful. Those, those meetings that have that type of educational piece. And again, you know, the opportunity to go out and be in the schools or attend some of the functions. You, you know, you don't necessarily talk to everyone all the time, but you can see the dynamics. You can see the parents that are there. You might talk to a few teachers, you talk to a few students, um, out in the community. People, I'm surprised, I, people do recognize me and it's, it's always scary when I step out to go food shopping at seven o'clock Saturday morning. I'm thinking, is this okay to dress like this? You know, because I always think about it now and I didn't before, you know, I just didn't care. So I do appreciate the administration very much in the same way that Mrs. Stoll does.
Thank you for that. All right. I told you all, we were going to go about 30 minutes and I know it's a long night and we're about 34 minutes in here roughly. So I always like to try to begin and end on kind of high notes and people will continue to engage in this conversation with questions. So there will be questions, you know, we'll have a couple of thousand views when it's all said and done over the next few days. So people can keep pumping their questions in there and we can respond. But let's, let's kind of try to close it out. And I know you all have commitments this evening. With what's the best part? What is the best part about serving as a board director? I, I, I recognize the easy answer and the right answer is the kids, right? But like just share a highlight or something that, you know what, it's one of those moments you're like, this is why I do what I do. So Ed, why don't we start with you? Can you think of an example of, you know, what just makes it all worth it?
Yeah, I think for me, over the, over the course of my, uh, four years, certainly to your point, Dr. Bauer, the, the interaction with kids is the best part of the job. And I recall when I was a board director, I tried to get around to the different schools and I have a lot of memories. I remember being dressed up as a pirate at Bridle Path Elementary one morning. And I remember sitting in a, in a second grade classroom with Mr. Winkle up at, at Nash and, and reading to the kids up there. And I remember being in the room at York Avenue when the butterflies hatched in the butterfly unit in first grade. But the, the, I think the experience that sticks out the most for me, and it, it might be in part because I was sort of an alum of, of Montgomery. But the staff there for the four years that I was on the board really welcomed me into their THON fundraiser every year. And I have just some of the best memories, uh, interacting with both the staff and the students for, for that event every year. And when I look back at my, my time on the board, um, you know, I still have my, I still have my T-shirts. Each year was a different color with Montgomery THON on the back and things like that. And people, uh, think and say, and it's a common saying that the school board is a thankless job. And if you just come to meetings and you just show up and you just vote and go through the motions, that the job may very well be thankless, but if you, if you actually take the trust that the public gives you and you make the most of that experience and you actually get involved and you try to have an impact. And, and, uh, I found that being on the school board was one of the most rewarding things that, that I ever did.
That was beautifully said. It may be a perspective I needed. So yeah, thank you for that, Ed. That was great. Kathy, Tina, Bob, anybody want to add just one of those moments that really like, yep, this is what it's all about.
Yeah. So I, I would concur with Ed, um, that going, you know, into the schools and seeing the kids, you know, with, um, we were just, um, at North, for instance, last week and we got to see the therapy dogs, um, going to musicals, going to sporting events. All those kinds of things, but going to the theater programs, it's really, that's the fun part. But I do remember when I started and I went to the MCIU for a school board director class. And Tina Valetto, she was the director of the MCIU at the time. And she said that all school board directors, it's a non-paying job. You're not paid any money whatsoever. Your payday is graduation day. And I thought, that is really cool. Yeah, it is graduation day. When we're out there handing out the diplomas and everybody is so happy, the parents are so excited to see their kids graduating. The kids are happy to be graduating. It was just a fun, incredibly fun night every time. That is our payday and, um, I think it makes it all worthwhile.
Wonderful. Yeah. You say that every year, Tina, and it's, it's so true. Yeah. All right. Ms. McMurtry, Mr. Gilmer.
Mr. Gilmer, to you.
Well, I haven't been a board member, so, but I will say this, all through the years, I've really appreciated the support of all of our, um, school board members. And what I love is the fact like for us at North Penn Television, you know, people have talked about like, oh, we should get you robotic cameras or something like that. So if you haven't been to a board meeting, you will always see our students there working. And I think it's such, besides working and having them learn the skill, that they learn so much just about government process, public engagement, those types of things. And it's one of the most valuable things we do in teaching our students of how, how to work in television in public and know that their job is to stand there and be objective and they're not part of the conversation. They're not agreeing or disagreeing. They're there to run cameras so that our community can see what's happening at school board meetings. So I've got lots of stories, but they may not be told here. That, uh, you know, the big thing that I always just really appreciate is, um, the opportunity for our kids to be a part of that from that side of making sure the public has the information they need so they can watch you guys do your thing. So that, that's, that's my point.
Yeah, that's a perspective I don't know that I've ever taken the time to consider, Bob. You know, not only are they learning the skills and hearing you in their ear, okay, camera this, camera that, move this over to the podium, focus on Dr. Bauer. Like I know you're directing behind the scenes, but the government lessons. That's, that's a really neat perspective. All right. Ms. McMurtry.
Okay, I'll keep it quick. Dr. Bauer, so one of my favorite times has been, as we are moving forward with the design of the high school project, the involvement of the ENACT club. And it's, you know, it is a passion of mine, the environmental aspect. And I do love how these students collaborate and come to meetings and are all in regarding their recommendations on what we can do from a school level and also from just being good environmental stewards. So I really, that, that's all, that, the first time they came, that was a real aha moment for me and I really appreciated it.
Love it. Okay. Well, um, I want to thank all of you so much for your service, for your willingness to be guinea pigs for me in this exercise. I want to thank all the people who engaged in the chat here. We did get a couple of quick questions or comments. Related or not, I feel compelled to respond. There was one about if we had a parade for, I don't know.
That was at the top.
If one of our local teams won a championship of some sort, would, because I don't want, I don't want to jinx it or talk about it.
No parades. We're not talking parades yet.
It is the prerogative of the parent in such a circumstance that if they needed to have an excused absence for family travel to go stand, that would be something we would consider excused. Uh, I did say, what was that, Tina? Yeah, the precedent is definitely there. I, I will say that Bob and I did a superintendent live following the board meeting this morning. And I said, stop with the emails about a two-hour delay. Stop with the emails about canceling schools that day after the Super Bowl. That's not happening. I just think it sends the wrong message to the community that you're prioritizing a football game over education. But if families make those decisions, they make those decisions. Um, and then the, the one other question that was in here that I felt compelled to respond to was, can I ask about the pool construction? Are we still on schedule to start after the triathlon? And the answer to that question is unequivocally yes. We are having the triathlon, elementary triathlon this year. And then shortly thereafter, actually right after the rain date is when you'll start to see the construction. We may, depending on how things pan out, we may remove the bulkhead before the triathlon. Uh, cause that needs to be worked on, whether it's a new bulkhead or whether it's refurbished. Still, that's an, an alternate option. But we've heard from the PE department, Mr. Theodore in particular, who's in charge of the triathlon, that they would love for us to remove the bulkhead before the triathlon. So that may happen. That's the only change you would see beforehand. But yes, uh, we are on pace to start construction on renovation of the pool right after the triathlon. So with that, um, I, I am absolutely compelled to just say at the end here, this really thank you for serving your community, being on this side of things. And it's my job, right? Like I make a living as a school district administrator. You're a volunteer. And when I get the angry emails or the phone calls or the people upset with me, I always responded to Tina the last eight years like, I get, I get paid to do this. This is my job. You are volunteering and serving your community, which, um, I, I think you're superheroes. I really do. It's a lot of time away from your loved ones. It's a lot of stress and commitment and just as this January 2025, thank you for serving the North Penn School District.
Thank you. And see the thank yous in the chat too. That's very nice people handing numbers to put thank yous to.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for your engagement and your thank yous. Ed, thanks for joining us. I know you, the North Penn School District's in the, the rearview for you, but, uh, really appreciate you coming on here and chatting with us for a bit and hope to catch up again soon.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Take care, everybody.
Take care. Bye.
Take care.